Test. Test. All right. Test. Test. Come on. Test.
And then the Washington Street Business Trick or Treat is from eleven until two on Saturday, the twenty ninth, and we expect like eight hundred with a thousand kids running around the downtown. So not only be aware of kids in the streets on that day, but also on the thirty first for trick or treating. So just be aware.
Okay, anybody else?
Jeff.
I won't see him. We're still working on personnel finance on the budget for the twenty twenty-three year and just letting everybody know that our next meeting is Wednesday at six.
Wednesday.
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Yep, yeah, we keep flipping back and forth.
Yep, Thursday night this week.
So I encourage people to come in and listen in and find out what's going on.
Okay, Tracy.
Yeah, I have two boards. The first one, library board, met last week and went through a very successful summer reading program stats. I mean, they, a number, nine thousand five hundred fifty-seven books were logged out.
Wow.
And they gave away a lot of batches and stuff, but most importantly, especially if you have young children, you have to take them to Camp Read-A-Lot, which is back in the youth section. They gave us a tour and Ms. Ail, who's the youth library program, she takes care of it. Unbelievable. It's a regular campsite and even has a boat with fishing in it. Of course, it's got words on everything so that if they don't know the words, they can associate. And it was fun. I didn't even get to make it back to the Bear Cave, but they had one of those too. So if you have children, you definitely want to take them. And our, the Public Works meeting, I did want to say that we did put on the agenda council members Petrie's request from a citizen, their concerns about the direction of traffic on Zlatnik. So it is going to be on the agenda, but our next meeting, because we want public safety there as well, so somebody from the police department. And our next meeting isn't until Pearl Harbor Day because of the meeting, finance, personnel and finance meeting is on our normal night in November. So we decided to postpone. So everybody can be there for personnel, finance and public utilities and everything.
Oh, that's the joint meeting, sure.
Yeah, the joint. So we figured that. So December seventh, in case you don't know what Pearl Harbor Day is, December seventh is our next meeting.
Yeah, outstanding job by the library. I don't know if Jeff is here or not, but somewhere back there. I know my daughter was at one of those and like I told you the other day, she keeps singing that jellyfish song. So whatever you guys did, it stuck. Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much.
He's a backbencher tonight.
He's behind some pretty big guys. Anybody else? Boards and commissions? All right, seeing none, turn it over to Greg.
Okay, we, we have two groups of invited guests tonight. As you know, we've had District Administrator Diane Johnson on tap for a while to talk about the community survey on school facilities in the upcoming referendum. But in light of recent events, most notably last Friday night's event at Chilton, our district administrator was more than happy to yield the first position on the floor to the special guests tonight, coaching staff and must be the whole Two Rivers Raiders Eastern Wisconsin Championship team from Two Rivers Raiders. And we do have a resolution for the council's consideration tonight, both congratulating our Raider football team on their Eastern Wisconsin championship and wishing the team success in the playoffs ahead, which start this Friday.
I'm gonna go read it?
Sure.
You got it. All right, resolution congratulating the Two Rivers Raiders and the twenty twenty-two Eastern Wisconsin Championship Football Team and wishing them success in the playoffs. Whereas Two Rivers Raiders Football Team on October fourteenth defeated Chilton by a score of twenty-nine to twenty-one in three overtimes on Chilton's home turf to finish the regular season with a perfect nine wins and zero losses. And whereas that victory secured the Eastern Wisconsin Conference Championship for Two Rivers, our high school's first conference championship since nineteen ninety. And whereas the Raiders will now embark on the playoffs, leading to the WIAA Division Four Championship, starting with a playoff game at home against Kettle Moraine Lutheran on Friday, October twenty-first. And whereas this twenty twenty-two football season has been marked by not only great talent on the field and great coaching from the sidelines, but also by outstanding sportsmanship. Even in the high tension season finale game, where the sportsmanship shown by the Raiders and their Chilton opponents earned high praise from game officials. And whereas the accomplishments of the twenty twenty-two Raider Football Team are a source of great pride to our community and of great excitement for a path ahead in the playoffs. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Two Rivers does hereby extend congratulations to Coach Kevin Schillcox, to his coaching staff, and to all members of the twenty twenty-two Raider Football Team on its accomplishments in this amazing, hard-fought conference championship season. And be it further resolved that the City Council joins with the entire Two Rivers community in cheering on this team as they pursue further success in the Division Four Championship playoffs in the weeks ahead, continuing to exhibit the great talent, coaching and sportsmanship that have made the members of this team not only winners, but first-class representatives of our city. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution provided to District Administrator Diane Johnson, TRHS Athletic Director Brian Gallagher, TRHS Principal Timothy Ng, and Coach Kevin Schillcox in token of the city's appreciation and respect for their accomplishments this football season and support for the great team in the upcoming playoffs dated the seventeenth day of October twenty twenty-two. Looking for a motion? Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Jeff, thank you. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Jamie, roll call vote, please.
Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Huesky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Motion curious.
Very good. Congratulations to these guys. All right, thank you for that. Usually at this meeting, the third one of the month, we invite a youngster from preschool or someone from the elementary school to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're just gonna do another shout out for that because obviously we just got off the summer recess break there. So if anyone has a young one that is interested in joining us and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please contact Lisa in the City Manager's Office and we will get them on the schedule and they can come and join us for that. Uh, roll call, Jamie.
Jeff Delkey.
Here.
Tracy Coach.
Here.
Bill Leclair.
Here.
Darla Leclair.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Jason Ring.
Here.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Here.
Scott Stackmesser.
Here.
Adam Huesky.
Here.
All right, we can skip over number four. Everyone is here. We have no public hearing for tonight. Brings us to number six, which is input from the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on anything that is on this agenda or something for a future agenda, please step up to the podium, my right, your left, and state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we will move on to number seven, which is council communications. Any council member have letters or other communications from citizens they'd like to share? Jeff?
Um, I have several again on utility bills being high. And another one, I think I got two calls on this one. Um, people that are rentals are renting property. They're having issues with property management companies not doing due diligence on taking care of things and they wanted to know if there's anything city-wise or ordinance that these companies need to be following.
Um, right now there is nothing that we have. I know we've talked about it briefly at Plan Commission about getting a registry of rental units and their owners slash their manager system. But nothing up to date. I'm sure we'll be bringing that back before Plan Commission. Would that be correct at some point, Greg?
I, I expect so. You know, I would just add, you know, some of the basic code compliance things as far as exterior maintenance, but things that may be specific to a tenant, uh, probably not sufficient in what we have in the ordinances right now.
They're just worried about they can't get ahold of any of the property management companies. They're just.
That's a real good feeling. They'll get in touch with you if you don't pay the rent, but other than that.
Right, and that's all they want.
Yeah, well, part of it may very well be like we've now implemented with the vacation rental ordinance to at least have a name of record of a manager or a maintenance person that can be contacted if the owner's not available. Sounds like that could be a step in the right direction if we addressed it like Adam referenced.
All right, I'll pass it on to them. Rick? Is that it?
I'm shocked. Anybody else? Council Communications.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number eight. Uh, council reports from boards, commissions and committees. Anyone have anything they'd like to share? Darla?
Okay, um, we have finalized our lineup for the Main, no, it's not Main Street, it's the Environmental Advisory Board's Winter Educational Series. And Greg, I'd like to be able to share that, um, or get a link onto our website.
Sure.
So I'll talk to you about that later this week. Um, we are going ahead with the, getting together a proposal for Plan Commission for the front yard vegetable gardening. I have enlisted the help from the UW Mantua Master Gardeners President, who'll be able to help us with that, keeping in mind Curb Appeal. Recommended vegetables for our area, what works good in the sun, what works good in shade, and also different things that the homeowner can purchase to use that are very, very attractive. This has come a very, very long way. Um, in, in different parts of the United States, it's very popular. So, um, things that you can get at Lowe's or Menards are, are pretty decent. So that's what's happening with that. And then with Main Street, um, we're going to be, um, working on the banner art again for this coming year. We're also having a design committee meeting later this week and we're really going to delve down into our murals initiative. And so, um, and Jason will be there and, you know, we're gonna try and really start moving on these things. And Jason, if you want to just let us know what else is going on with the rest of the crew.
Uh, well, Greg's gonna talk about or point out two of our events coming up in the next couple of weeks will be a Fall Wine Walk. Tickets still available, thirty dollars, and that'll be on October twenty-eighth. And then the, um, the Washington Street Business Trick or Treat is from eleven until two on Saturday, the twenty-ninth. And, uh, we expect like eight hundred with a thousand kids running around the downtown. So, um, not only be aware of kids in the streets on that day, but also on the thirty-first for trick or treating. So just be aware.
Okay, anybody else? Jeff?
I won't see him. We're still working on personnel and finance on, on the budget for the twenty twenty-three year and, uh, just letting everybody know that our next meeting is Wednesday at six.
Thursday night?
This Thursday. This Thursday? Yep, yeah, we keep flipping back and forth.
Thursday night this week.
So I encourage people to come in and listen in and find out what's going on.
Okay, Tracy.
Yeah, I have two boards. The first one, library board, met last week and, um, went through a very successful, um, summer reading program stats. I mean, they, a number, nine thousand five hundred fifty-seven books were logged out.
Wow.
And they gave away a lot of batches and stuff, but most importantly, especially if you have young children, you have to take them to Camp Read-A-Lot, which is back in the youth section. They gave us a tour and, um, Ms. Ail, um, who's the youth library program. She takes care of all that. Unbelievable. It's a regular campsite and even has a boat with, um, fishing in it. Of course, it's got words on everything so that if they don't know the words, they can associate. And it was fun. I didn't even get to make it back to the Bear Cave, but they had one of those too. So if you have children, you definitely want to take them. Um, and our, um, the Public Works meeting, I did want to say that, um, we did put on the agenda, uh, council members Petrie's, um, requests from, um, a citizen, their concerns about, um, uh, the direction of traffic on Zlatnik. So it is going to be on the agenda, but our next meeting, because we want public safety there as well, so somebody from the police department. And, um, our next meeting isn't until Pearl Harbor Day because of the meeting, um, finance, personnel and finance meeting, uh, is on our normal night in November. So we decided to postpone. So everybody can be there for personnel, finance and public utilities and everything.
Oh, that's the joint meeting, sure.
Yeah, the joint. So we figured that. So December seventh, in case you don't know what Pearl Harbor Day is, December seventh is our next meeting.
Yeah, outstanding job by the library. I don't know if Jeff is here or not, but somewhere back there. I know my daughter was at one of those and like I told you the other day, she keeps singing that jellyfish song. So whatever you guys did, it's stuck. Yeah, yeah. Thank you so much.
He's a backbencher tonight.
He's behind some pretty big guys. Uh, anybody else? Boards and commissions? All right, seeing none, turn it over to Greg.
Okay, we, uh, we have, uh, two groups of invited guests tonight. As you know, we've had District Administrator Diane Johnson, um, um, on tap for a while to talk about the community survey on school facilities in the upcoming referendum. But in light of recent events, most notably last Friday night's event at Chilton, our district administrator was more than happy to yield the first position on the floor, uh, to the special guests tonight, uh, coaching staff and must be the whole Two Rivers Raiders, uh, Eastern Wisconsin, uh, championship, uh, team from, uh, Two Rivers Raiders. And we do have a resolution for the council's consideration tonight, uh, both congratulating our Raider Football Team on their Eastern Wisconsin championship and wishing the team success in the playoffs ahead, which start this Friday.
I'm gonna go read it?
Sure.
You got it. All right, resolution congratulating the Two Rivers Raiders and the twenty twenty-two Eastern Wisconsin Championship Football Team and wishing them success in the playoffs. Whereas Two Rivers Raiders Football Team on October fourteenth defeated Chilton by a score of twenty-nine to twenty-one in three overtimes on Chilton's home turf to finish the regular season with a perfect nine wins and zero losses. And whereas that victory secured the Eastern Wisconsin Conference Championship for Two Rivers, our high school's first conference championship since nineteen ninety. And whereas the Raiders will now embark on the playoffs, leading to the WIAA Division Four Championship, starting with a playoff game at home against Kettle Moraine Lutheran on Friday, October twenty-first. And whereas this twenty twenty-two football season has been marked by not only great talent on the field and great coaching from the sidelines, but also by outstanding sportsmanship. Even in the high tension season finale game, where the sportsmanship shown by the Raiders and their Chilton opponents earned high praise from game officials. And whereas the accomplishments of the twenty twenty-two Raider Football Team are a source of great pride to our community and of great excitement for a path ahead in the playoffs. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Two Rivers does hereby extend congratulations to Coach Kevin Schillcox, to his coaching staff, and to all members of the twenty twenty-two Raider Football Team on its accomplishments in this amazing, hard-fought conference championship season. And be it further resolved that the City Council joins with the entire Two Rivers community in cheering on this team as they pursue further success in the Division Four Championship playoffs in the weeks ahead, continuing to exhibit the great talent, coaching and sportsmanship that have made the members of this team not only winners, but first-class representatives of our city. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution provided to District Administrator Diane Johnson, TRHS Athletic Director Brian Gallagher, TRHS Principal Timothy Ng, and Coach Kevin Schillcox in token of the city's appreciation and respect for their accomplishments this football season and support for the great team in the upcoming playoffs dated the seventeenth day of October twenty twenty-two. Looking for a motion? Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Jeff, thank you. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Jamie, roll call vote, please.
Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Huesky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Motion curious.
Very good. Congratulations to these guys. Do you want to take, uh, put photo in here or, uh, sure, or over here? Or over here? We can go over there. Sorry.
Do you have the, yeah.
I think we have the.
We, I think they, I'll decide.
Should have been last.
We have multiple through the regulation and that wanted to, wanted to do a photo.
It's a tough group. They all get in there, huh?
Yeah, there's the coach down.
Yeah, we should have the coaches up here.
Jake.
Please, Jake.
Brian, you're sitting there.
Down there.
Jake, why don't you guys come on over here? DeAndre, you're in the front of the phone. We always go back.
We see you hiding back.
Did you run through the cameras?
Good luck.
Great, congratulations, guys.
We won't make, we won't punish you by making you stay for the whole meeting unless you like give, you know, civic section credit or something.
I'm gonna give one.
You're always welcome. You're welcome to.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done, guys. Very good. Thank you all. Uh, now I'd like to invite up to the podium, uh, representatives of our school district. I know we have, uh, both District Administrator Johnson and Mary Kay Slattery, the business manager for the Two River Schools.
We also have some of our board members here, if they would like to introduce themselves.
Jen Hendrickson, School Board Vice President.
Jen Hendrickson.
Gary Shavlik, Board Member.
Gary Shavlik.
So thank you. Um, before we start, I just want to thank you for inviting our kids here because obviously we do what we do because of our kids. And it was, um, a great honor for them to, uh, battle in three overtimes and, and to take that title. But more importantly is receiving, uh, an email from one of the officials, and I, I think some of you have probably seen that.
That's awesome.
Really touting the character of our kids, which for me is way more important than winning a game. And I know maybe the kids wouldn't agree with that and maybe the coaches wouldn't. But character is what they're gonna take with them into their lives when they leave high school and that's what we really are proud of our kids for. So thank you. Um, we were going to come and see you, um, at one of your work sessions. Um, and your work sessions happened to fall at the same time that our board meetings happen. So we're kind of opposite you. So when I talked to Greg a couple, probably a couple of months ago, Greg said, well, we'll have you come to a, a meeting, but we'll, if you can shorten it to ten minutes. And for those who have seen our presentation, there wasn't any way we could shorten it to ten minutes. So what we're going to do is we're gonna share two videos with you. One video is of the needs and one video is of the tax impact. And so if you're looking at your handout, um, the, the video on the needs really focuses more on LB Clark because LB Clark is the need. So the first page of your handout and about halfway down into the middle section where there's actually a graphic of LB Clark, that'll be talking about, the first video will be talking about those needs. And then the second video will talk about from the cost over to basically the investment. And then we also added on there what the question looks like. So you'll see that on the third page. What the referendum does not include, because lots of people kind of had, when we sent out the survey, we had eight hundred eighty-eight surveys come back and people said, well, I, I don't support a turf field or I don't support a baseball field. So that's what the community said. So it is not part of the referendum. But I think that was confusing. The survey kind of confused people. So we wanted to be able to share what it doesn't support. Also, on the very back page then, if your questions aren't answered, I'll stay after and you can come and talk to me. Um, but we also, on that very last slide, our website has everything on it. It has this presentation, the presentation we did for you back in January, it has the, the tax impact, it has the study that was done, it has frequently asked questions on it, it has a tax calculator on it if you want to know how much it means for you. So all of that is on our website. I'd also like to offer to you, um, and I know many of you work, like this is, you go to your job and then you come to this job. It's kind of like our board does the same thing. They go to a job and come to this job. But if there's a time, because you're the city council, if there's a time that you say, we could make it Diana, Diana, on October twenty-eighth, you probably don't want to come on Halloween, but, um, we could make it at twelve o'clock. It might give you an opportunity to see what it looks like in the middle school at those lunchtimes, to see the hallways. We can show you the classrooms, we can show you the need. So if that works and, and you talk to each other and maybe Adam can get ahold of me that you would like to do that, we would offer you to do that as well. So Greg, if you can show the first one.
Hi, I am Diane Johnson, the Superintendent of the Two River School District. The district hired Bray Architects and C.G. Schmidt to do a very comprehensive view of the district. And it became very evident that.
Is if we would have more space for the kids to spread out so they can be in smaller groups and they can work collaboratively together.
There's currently more kids here, I believe, than there are at the high school. And this building is substantially smaller.
We have a lot of updated and newer equipment for the kids and we can't use the equipment because we don't have, we need to add it to our electrical system. The panels are full.
Specifically tech ed, the space itself can't handle the tools and machines that they want to use there.
We have a laser engraver.
I hate the jumping. Can we just restart it?
Because the electrical infrastructure in the building.
Oh, yeah. That's okay. I, I think I got feedback, but I think everyone else got feedback too. So just.
Hi, I'm Diane Johnson, the Superintendent of the Two River School District. The district hired Bray Architects and C.G. Schmidt to do a very comprehensive view of the district. And it became very evident that the need was at LB Clark.
One of the things that I think would be really, really great is if we would have more space for the kids to spread out so they can be in smaller groups and they can work collaboratively together.
There's currently more kids here, I believe, than there are at the high school. And this building is substantially smaller.
We have a lot of updated and newer equipment for the kids and we can't use the equipment because we don't have, we need to add it to our electrical system. The panels are full.
Specifically tech ed, the space itself can't handle the tools and machines that they want to use there.
We have a, a laser engraver that we're currently unable to use because the electrical infrastructure in the building doesn't support it.
Such little space, it's hard to get projects done on time.
It's like very packed. You gotta wait longer.
The lunchrooms are very small. That really spreads out a day. And think about eating at ten forty-five in the morning or think about eating at one thirty in the afternoon.
I actually buy food so that I can supplement those snacks that are in the room as well, too, because those kids just physically need that.
Another need is the hallways. When you're out in the hallways, you kind of move out of the way when that bell rings because there are so many kids. The hallways in nineteen sixty-nine were built smaller.
I see a lot of people like shoving and pushing just to get through so they don't be late to like their next class.
We've got four grade levels that are here, fifth all the way through eighth. And if you know anything about kids, all of those kids are physically different. We've got little fifth graders all the way up to big, healthy eighth graders. That, that's a lot of congestion in the hallway.
Another area that's very concerning is the parking and the drive-up. Around three fifteen, cars start lining up. It takes about fifteen or twenty minutes to be able to drive up and pick up your child. Sometimes, cars aren't so patient, and we end up with kids crossing traffic, which is just not a safe thing for them to do.
Being able to attract new students, attract families, attract staff, and then, once we do attract them, to retain them, all of the work that is set to be done that pertains to the items in the referendum should do that. Hopefully, it makes Two Rivers a place people want to come and makes it a place people want to stay.
I'm Mary Kay Slattery. I'm the Finance Director for the district. Along with that video, which showed the needs that we have throughout mainly at Clark, we also put together a video that shows the finances of the project and talks about the tax impact. So, if you have any further questions after that, please let me know. I do believe the video will provide a lot of information for you. Kay Slattery, I'm the Finance Director for the district. One of the things that the district really prides itself on over the years that I've been here has been financial accountability. We have had successful referendums in the past. For example, back in nineteen ninety-eight, we passed a six million dollar referendum that remodeled our elementary schools with the majority of it going to Canig Elementary School, as well as the front addition that went on to LB Clark Middle School. In two thousand, we passed nineteen point eight million dollar referendum, and that was for the construction of Two Rivers High School. And then, in two thousand sixteen, we passed a referendum for three point seven million dollars that was for some remodeling and upgrades throughout the district. For this school year, we're anticipating it to be even less than what it was last year. Our cost of this project is thirty-eight point seven million dollars. That translates to a tax increase of forty-nine cents per thousand of fair market value of your property. So, what that means is that if you have a home that is worth a hundred thousand dollars, your tax increase for this project is forty-nine dollars. Once that increase is on your tax bill, it will stay there for the remainder of the time that the debt is paid off. The district is working with Robert W. Baird for this financing, as we have done for other financings in the past. Like I said, once that increase is on the tax bill, it will be there for every year just going forward. It's a one-time increase, and that is it. Of the total project, sixty-four percent of the cost is being allocated to LB Clark Middle School, with the remaining thirty-six percent being for other needs throughout the district. Our website also has a tax impact calculator where you can enter the value of your home, and then, it will translate to how much that tax impact will be for your individual property. So, that is the need and the impact. And again, the question is on there because sometimes when you go to vote, you're like, "I don't even understand what that says" because they're a little bit detailed and legal. So, question is there for you to see. And again, we'll stay, or I'll stay. I think Mary Kay has to go, and I'm not sure about the board members, but we can answer your questions then, and we'll be here. So, thank you.
Okay, I know Councilmember Leclerc did have a couple of questions from people that she wanted to ask Mary Kay. So, if she has an opportunity to ask some questions, go ahead, Darla.
Thank you. And I'm actually, I'm really glad that you guys were able to come to a council meeting instead of a work session. We broadcast the work sessions, but I don't know how many people actually watch that. But there's, there's been a lot of confusion out in the community. There's been a lot of concern about paying this. And so, hopefully, the people with the questions are watching this evening and will be able to get some sort of an answer. The, the, I still call it the new high school. It's no longer, I mean, it's lived in, all right? That has been paid off. That was what, twenty twenty? Correct. Correct? And with, now, that was less, the cost of that referendum was less than what this referendum is. But it seems like, it seems almost as if the tax doesn't quite jive with what we had experienced in the past. And that's a, that's a long ans, you know, you would have to have a long answer for that question, so we could talk about that some other time. But it just, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to fathom how it's only going to be forty-nine bucks on a hundred thousand dollars. So, I think we really got to sit down and really dive into that. You know, like, right now, you know, thirty percent of the students are economically disadvantaged. The Two Rivers poverty rate is eight point eight percent. The median household income for Two Rivers is right around fifty thousand. The median state household income is sixty-three, so we're kind of behind the, behind on that. And since twenty-ten, we've lost four hundred and forty-two people in our, in our community. I'm just wondering, you know, I, I don't know if you guys took into consideration the financial hurdles that our community has, you know, because that's a lot of, that's a lot of money to spend. And a lot of these people are living paycheck to paycheck. And, you know, as well as, you know, it's like preaching to the choir. Things are super expensive right now. Here's what bothers me, and it also bothered some other people, is right now, the district's average testing ranking is two out of ten. And we put in a new high school. We've done all these other two referendum, the remodeling of the middle school and elementary schools, and then, million dollar, three point seven million dollar upgrades and remodeling throughout the district. But I don't think that our ranking has gone up. And I'd like that taken into consideration. We spend a lot of money on our school system, and we appreciate you guys. We want the best for our kids. We want the teachers to be able to do their job and to do it well. And when's that ranking going to come up? What are we getting, what are we getting for all this investment? You know, because one thing is that if I, if I still had little kids and I didn't live in the community, if I lived outside the community and I was thinking about moving here and I saw what our ranking was, that would probably just push me away. Because I know for a lot of people, a robust school district is extremely important. So, and one last thing, and this is, I just want to bring it up. I don't need an answer right now, but is the high school at capacity? You know, how many, how many students is it rated for? Because like, right now, you've got, you don't, I, I think you're, I think you're, you're under the capacity. And I'm just wondering, you've got the four, you've got fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth over at the middle school. Is that, have you talked about maybe moving the eighth grade students over to the high school? Because if, and I would be able to be a lot brighter on this if I knew what the capacity was. It's very hard to find out information about our school system and our schools, especially when you go out and you're trying to glean this information. It's very difficult. But I would like to know if that was ever a consideration, moving the eighth graders out, out to the high school. So, that's basically it. I mean, you look at our population, eight point eight percent poverty level, thirty percent of students economically disadvantaged. Our, our household income is significantly lower than the rest of the state, and our population is dwindling. So, how are we really going to be able to pay this off? It's very valid and good ideas as to what should be done at our schools. But you just got to, you got to know your audience. And I, I don't know if we can really absorb the burden. Thank you.
Couple of things that I'd like to address. You bring up some very valid points. And I can tell you that we had a group of seventeen people who met for six months every Thursday, every other Thursday. And we went through how many different options, eight different options. And we have information on that, and we're more than like, more than willing to share that. We talked about actually having the eighth grade be moved on to the high school. And it was through the committee's decision that it was believed that that was not the best move for the age group of the eighth graders with the upperclassmen being in the same building. We did take into consideration, in fact, we've had a number of people at our presentations that have said, "Why don't you just bulldoze LB Clark and start over? Maybe it's time for a new middle school." And we did look at that. However, the cost of just a new middle school alone would have been forty-three million dollars. The cost of the other upgrades going throughout the district, such as safe and secure entrances, playgrounds, parking lots, still exist. So, when we bring together a new middle school with all those other components, we would have had a referendum that would have been just shy of sixty million dollars. We looked at that and said, "That is way too much and has too big of a price tag for our community." Regarding the schools themselves, as far as the, the population, in our presentations that we did in spring, you can see that our enrollments, and all of this is on file with the state, have actually been very level. For the past ten years, we have always been in having the head count, the student head count, in the seventeen hundred range. It has been very consistent. This year, it's actually higher, seventeen ninety-three. So, and a lot of that has to do with our charter school that we have. We have, I don't know if you're familiar with the open enrollment program, but what it does is it allows students who don't live in the Two Rivers area to come to Two Rivers for their education. We have, and then, there's money that's exchanged between the districts for that. Whoever has the residency of that student is the one that pays the other district to educate their residents. Two Rivers School District, for the past, I don't know how many number of years, but I'll say at least seven to ten, has been netting positive revenue on that. What that means is we have more students that are wanting to come to Two Rivers for their education than wanting to leave. Regarding reasons for wanting to leave, some of it has to do with childcare, job situations. But we typically do follow up on families to find out, "Why are you leaving? Why are you going to another district? Why do you leave, why do you live here and go to school in Manitowoc?" And we do touch base with those families because we do want them to be in our district to get their education here. I can tell you that this is a capital improvement referendum only. There are some districts in the state of Wisconsin, actually, a number of them, including the November eighth referendum, where they have our, can go to referendum for operating expenses. So, what that means is that they go to the taxpayers and say, "We need more money to pay our bills for teacher salaries." Two Rivers, I can proudly say, has never done that. We have always worked within the budget constraints that we have. So, we are, that is not what this referendum is. It is only for capital improvements, only to improve the actual structures of our buildings as well.
Diane, if, I'm sorry if you could use the mic. I apologize.
Saying, if you have questions, you have to call us, and that's why we have our information on there. We have been to thirteen now. I think we have two left and had four at our schools' presentations. Like, we'll answer your questions. If you have questions about enrollment and you can't find it, don't go searching. We have it. Greg just asked me on Monday. He said, "Can you send me what the, the amount of kids that are coming in because Manitowoc had more kids going out?" I sent him all that information along with our poverty and our disabilities.
I just looked it up. I wanted to share the stat. After Mary Kay's comments, a hundred forty-eight enrolling out, two hundred eighty-seven enrolling in. So, that's darn near two to one. That, I think, that certainly says something positive.
So, please feel free to just reach out. I mean, that's why we're here, so. I like the idea and the invitation to city council to come and meet with you guys and to have a, to actually be in the school. It's been a long time since I've been in the middle school. My kids are old now, you know, so, but just to see kind of, you know, see what's going on because, you know, visuals are worth a lot more than just words are. Yeah, on Thursday, we had one of the sessions at the middle school, and then, we had people who stayed, and they stayed for an hour and a half, and there weren't kids there. So, obviously, you didn't get to see like the kid part. But they wanted to see like the panels and the electrical and the tech ed room and the band room. Like, they were just all over the building. So, I would love for the council to come, and I'm sure we can find, you know, a time. It would be really good for the council to come during that ten forty-five until one thirty time when kids are eating, so you can kind of see how that works. Another great time, obviously, is at that about three fifteen time, but you would never get a parking place. So, you'd have to come earlier, but that's really a good time. On our video, we didn't, obviously, we didn't show the whole thing, but we have a drone image. One of our technology people has a drone, and he did a video of traffic at the end of the day, and then, they fast forwarded it by times eight, so you can see like the, it looks like ants. So, take a look at that if you have an opportunity.
I have experienced that, that traffic issue multiple times. You get stuck pretty far deep when you're on Forty-Fifth Street. I was going back from Tannery Road, and I was, I was there for a while. But also, thank you for addressing the rebuild of LB Clark. That was one thing that I was asked several times is, "Why don't they just demolish it and rebuild it?" With the, with the price tag of building the school, which was obviously twenty years ago. In people's eyes, they saw it as, "Well, you, you built a new high school for twenty million. Why are we having a referendum of thirty-seven million when you could just bulldoze it and rebuild it?" But obviously, building costs have also gone up. I do know Jeff had a question as well, so I'm going to kick it over to him real quick.
I get out and about quite a bit, so I talked to a lot of people over the course of the last few months on, on the school stuff. And some of this touches back on what Darla had said. People want to know what their return on investment is going to be, investment being the test, not the test scores, but the rankings. That, that bothers them a lot. Another thing that they touch on, a lot of people wanted to know, what is the bare necessities needed? Electrical upgrades, no one was ever given a number for that. We, we don't even know that you have even had a number for that. But there's no reason we couldn't have found out what the bare, bare minimums are, you know? What, what the electrical upgrade costs are going to be, things like that. And another one that also came up a lot was just eliminating one grade out of LB Clark cuts your traffic down there by thirty-three percent. So, if you could do that, K through three in one school, or K through two, and then, third, fourth, and fifth, and yet another one, whichever of the elementaries are bigger, have the bigger workload. All the time, people are asking me this. I've talked to the school board. All I can do is speculate. But those are the things that really come up, and the price tag, they don't like.
Now, that was one of the considerations is to do a, because we do have pre-K as well. So, a pre-K one, and then, a two through four. A five would, neither, and you've been in, in the elementary schools, neither of the elementary schools has room for a fifth grade, so you would have to do some kind of addition there. When you look at the high school, the high school is nice and spacious. But when you look at classrooms, there are no, I shouldn't say no, there might be one or two classrooms that are empty. So, it's not like you have a wing that you could dedicate to eighth grade because there aren't, those classrooms aren't available. As far as, you know, you talk about rankings, we don't like it either. And, and I can tell you that it burns a hole in my stomach when I see that our kids aren't producing what I think they can produce. We have a lot of kids going through youth apprenticeship. We've got, I mean, that number has grown, and we can bring that to you, too, and show you those numbers. We have kids in dual enrollment, which means they're doing high school and college classes. We have nineteen kids in the Phoenix Rising Program. And why they're testing the way they're testing, I don't know. Because I think they have a lot of skills that they're not bringing forward. And we have a team of educators that are working their tails off to take care of kids. I mean, come in and watch. We had our, our curriculum director went in. He substituted at the elementary school, and he was in a kindergarten classroom, and he's like, "Oh, my God." Like, these teachers deserve like a raise. So, we have people working really hard, and for some reason, it's not translating. So, we have a plan. We're working with the, the board on a strategic plan of, "Okay, what do we do? What do we do about teaching and learning? What do we do about getting the community involved in our schools?" Like, I said this before, we can't do this by ourselves. There's no way. involved in our schools? Like, I said this before, we can't do this by ourselves. There's no way. We have two hundred and fifty-one employees and nineteen, seventeen hundred and ninety-three kids. We can't do it alone. Like we need our community and we need all of us. And so that's why we're trying to build these relationships so that we have support for our kids. And what you saw today with all of our high school kids, that doesn't happen because of us or the coaches, it happens because of us, the community. So definitely something we, we need, we need to build on and we want to build on.
What about the bare necessity costs?
Pardon?
What about the cost for the bare necessities? Everything that is absolutely needed. Electrical.
When we talk about absolute need, I don't thi, I feel and I, and our committee of seventeen felt, there is nothing on there that's a want. We don't want, we don't, there, there is nothing that we say, oh, this is pie in the sky. The things that you see for that thirty-eight point seven are needs for the district. Those are things that the kids need and deserve. When you come and see us, you're gonna see kids, twenty-five kids in a classroom, probably about half the size of this. You're gonna see it. You're gonna see those needs and I think that's important. That's why I want you to come and observe that.
And one more, and I know this question is gonna get asked me in the next week or two. How did you determine the seventeen people on this committee?
So when we first started out, we had the administrative team and school board representatives. We extended to the city and Elizabeth as part of our committee from the city because actually the land that the renovate or the additions would go on are owned by the city. So we had to have a partnership with them. We had community members, we looked for people that might have some kind of facility background and we invited those people. So that's how we came up with the, so it's community members, parents, board members, administrators, teaching staff.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you, Diane. Thank you, Mary Kay. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
I would, and this, this handout is good, it's just a, a small portion of what's come out to the community, but again, if you look at the third page and I believe the, the bar chart with history on school district tax rate, well, yes, there'd be that forty-nine dollar increase on a hundred thousand dollar home. If you note, that is not bringing up the, the school district's tax rate to a level. It's still at a level below what it was when the debt was still paying paid off on the old high school. The le, the rate has dropped a bit in the last couple of years. It bumps up from that. But if you look back at the burden this community was carrying in terms of the school tax levy, it was significantly higher three years ago, four years ago, five years ago, six years ago, than what is improved, what is proposed even with this investment plan. So it's not taking the rate to levels unseen, it's taking the rate to levels below what was being paid when the high school was still being paid off. So just.
With a fairly steady enrollment from what they, what they said. Enrollment didn't drop, like some people, I've heard that on the street too, where they thought the enrollment really dropped off and it, it sounds like that is not the case.
Yeah, we were in a trend like that maybe twenty years ago to ten years ago, but it's been remarkably stable and it's honestly, it's great to see some growth and that says something. Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Next up, I guess, city managers report. Staffing updates, nothing really new here. We do have a vacancy in the recreation clerk position due to a very recent resignation. That's a full-time position that handles the bulk of program registrations, facility registrations in a lot of ways is the initial point of contact to the rec department. That is not a new position. With some concern out there from the community that it might be, far from it. It's a position that's been around for a long time, a vital part of the service delivery for the department. So we're advertising that deadline is October twenty-four. We are still looking for a new zoning administrator to fill the vacancy created by Vicky Berg's retirement. We're actively recruiting for that. That's a high high demand position and a vitally important service to property owners that are coming in with questions about zoning compliance, building permits, that sort of thing. So we're actively recruiting for that. This is somewhat old news. You formally met Matt Heckin-Lible at our public works director and city engineer at the last meeting. He continues in a part-time capacity, working mornings at his, his old position with the city of Green Bay. Afternoons here, but as of next Tuesday, Matt will be full-time here at Two Rivers. I can tell you, he's, he, he's in with both feet right now, even with half days, pulling together the budget, working with Scott all monitoring our capital projects, looking ahead to the capital plan for next year, including how do we figure out a less expensive way to maybe add some more lots in phase two point five of the Sandy Bay subdivision where we keep selling lots and where there are new houses going up, which is decidedly a good thing. Steven Gretz, I think we reported last time, recently began, we've hired him as our electric meter technician. He will be meter technician, but he, he also brings with him his journalman's card as an electrician, will be pursuing his master's certification and his inspector's certification. So at the same salary ranges, we will have not, not one, but two electricians on board in the electric utility. One of them is a designated meter tech. And Bo Skornica, certified water operator, filled a vacancy that arose due to actually a fairly new employee moving on to another employment opportunity. Not a net increase in staffing, but filling a, an existing vacant who are the very well-qualified candidate. Lives right here in the community. Seventeenth Street reconstruction is coming along. The main line paving of both sides of the street was completed as of last Friday. There's a fair amount of handwork at the intersection sidewalks and sidewalk ramps. That's beginning this week. And the intersection paving and sidewalk work, depending on weather conditions and what have, is expected to continue through early November. But I, I ran into a former council member this weekend who said, you finally got Seventeenth Street redone. So when people drive to the beach, instead of a badly deteriorated street, it's, it's gonna be a very impressive street with, I, I would add on the area between the bridge and the beach, expanded terrace areas, so we can do some decent tree planting over there. Maybe after a while you won't notice all the poles and overhead wires, although there's fewer of those too. Had to get that in there. Fine grading was underway today at the Washington Street pickleball and tennis court site. Again, that will be, is being reconstructed as six pickleball courts and one tennis court, reflecting the growing continued growing popularity of pickleball in the community and everywhere in the universe, it seems. So we expect to see northeast asphalt in doing the paving work next week. It'll pretty much sit for the winter. Come spring, and you saw the breakdown in, in their project budget, we're thankfully now within the hundred fifty thousand dollar budget. Come spring, you'll see the coating and striping of those courts and the coring in for placement of the posts for both the pickleball and tennis court nets and some internal fencing to separate. So we know there's been a lot of community demand for improved pickleball courts and didn't get it done this year for a variety of reasons, most notably the cost. The first time we bid it out. Some good work by our engineering department, looking at some efficiencies and we brought it in below budget. Looked to see some asphalt laid there very shortly. Our contract for scattered lead laterals replacement is been fulfilled with replacement of fifty-one lead water services. Fifty, thirty of those were both public side and private side. Twenty-one were only public side. So we do have some money remaining in the grant or the principal forgiveness that's on your agenda tonight that we could, between now and next April, do some, up to twenty approximately, additional private side replacements. So we'll see how that goes. We, we've met the requirements of the contract was let, that was let, but we still have the capacity to do more private side work. So.
Are we looking to have them contact the water department on that?
They still could contact the water department or customer service at seven nine three five five two three.
Okay.
Yeah. And our city crews, who are being reimbursed out of the, out of the project funds are busy notably on Adam Street, I mean, if you'd drive that, doing the concrete street repairs in follow-up to the lead lateral replacement. We've still got a lot of lead laterals in the community. We're eager to see what D N R funding is going to be next year, especially for the private side, where we've been able to provide twenty-five hundred dollar grants for property owners, residential property owners. A little bit up in the air, just what the funding protocols are going to be next year. Kind of leaves us scratching our heads. There's all this additional federal money flowing down and in some cases we're seeing less availability. But we, we want to keep diligently using those dollars to replace lead service laterals here, here in Two Rivers. Some of you got to see it before the meeting tonight, or maybe you've seen it around town as our staff are in the fire department or training on it. The new aerial platform truck was delivered about a week and a half ago and it replaces a beautifully maintained, but nineteen ninety-two, am I right there, chief?
Sir.
Thirty-year-old piece of equipment. Chief, this is impromptu, but could you come up to the mic and maybe explain some of the features of the new truck? This is a one point one seven million dollar investment of taxpayer money into a piece of equipment that's a thirty-year asset if, if passed as prologue as to what happens when you take really good care of these trucks and make good use of them. Chief Denzil.
It's red.
And that's an improvement in itself.
I agree. So actually, it's a pretty, it's a pretty competent truck. We tried to make the vehicle as simple as it possibly could, alleviating many of the sensors and things that would cause us problems down the road. Know a lot of departments have had issues with those in the past. We've tried to keep it as mechanical as possible. You'll notice it's a hundred-foot aerial truck. On the end of it's a big bucket. Actually gives us a lot of capabilities for overwater rescues or actually getting people off of elevated residences. So Miller Manor is one that we go to frequently. On the bucket, it actually has two side doors that pop open and they're large enough to where we can fit a wheelchair in there. So we can actually rescue somebody in that matter. The, the platform, the bucket can actually come and touch the ground. So we can actually do rescues from, from tall buildings as well. Has a feature on there which is called a parapet wall. It's a parapet wall ladder. What it does is it actually allows us to put the bucket above a parapet wall. Everybody know what a parapet is?
A little.
No. Parapet wall is, it's a, it's a fake facade wall in the front of buildings usually. Sometimes it actually goes around all the sides. And it's anywhere between two and eight feet above and a flat roof. So it's very hard to get over. So if we were to climb over with our current ladder, a lot of times we'd have a very difficult time getting down or we could get down, just not get back up. This bucket actually allows us to attach a ground ladder onto the end of it. So we can actually climb down that and then climb back up for ease of access. It has a very large two thousand gallon per minute pump on it, which is about what the city puts out in a, in a day. So it can actually pump the city dry, which we're very proud of. So.
Hope you never have to.
Hopefully never have to. So it's a great thing. But it's actually an upgrade from our, our old truck as well, where it carries three hundred gallons of water on it. Our last truck didn't carry any water. So we can actually run it to car accidents and things like that and use it as a frontline engine as well for, in limited instances. That's not its main purpose, but it can flow its own water by itself. So anybody have any other questions on it? I could dazzle you with all these neat little features, but I, yeah, don't wanna bore you.
Important piece of equipment happily. It fits in the barn because it's what, about eight feet longer?
It is. It is. We had to do a lot of moving around, but.
And the old ladder truck, has it headed off yet to its new home in Quincy, Mass?
It has not. I believe in about a week it's gonna go. They're gonna flatbed it out there and, yep. So it's gonna make Quincy, Massachusetts a very good secondary unit. So.
Any questions for the chief?
Can I come see it one day?
Anytime. All right. Bring the kids.
Sure is pretty. More importantly, it sure is an upgrade to what we have.
Quite a bit.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Being paid for in ten years, so well within the like, the useful life of the piece of apparatus. Yeah, I advanced on my screen. No, no graphic for this one. It could be a big dollar sign, but review of the city's twenty twenty-three budget as Mr. Dahlke referenced continues at Personnel and Finance on Thursday. At six P M. We will continue proceeding through the general fund budget. Last meeting, we reviewed the budgets for general government. I'm going from memory, but which total about one point three million dollars? And the agenda for public works departments in the general fund, which is about one point six. Expect we'll be getting into other major budgets this weekend next, such as police, fire and parks and recreation. Last year's general fund budget, our current year general fund budget, about ten point eight million dollars. And we're working hard to keep any increases within reason. We may have reasonable disagreements on what within reason means. But when you consider eighty-five percent of that operating budget is people, because we're a service business and we do have contractual commitments recently approved to what I would argue are reasonable wage adjustments. And for recruitment and retention, we need to be paying attention to our non-union wages. And what initially is looking like a pretty hefty health insurance increase, although we're working on that with looking at the, the benefit side of things. It's, it's a challenging year. I noted Mayor Nichols today made his budget announcement and Manitowoc is proposing about a two point two percent. Not saying we should or shouldn't, property tax increase and noting the strain, especially in this inflationary environment, which we are sure as heck not immune to in government either. So stay tuned. Those are open to the public. And of course, in late November, we'll be having the formal public hearing on budget. Oh, and having an election. If you've, if you've tuned in the TV or haven't been, you know, locked in a soundproof room, you probably realize that. In-person absentee voting for the general election is available at the clerk's office here at City Hall, Monday through Friday of October, from October twenty-fifth to November Anything else on that, Jamie?
The only other thing that's fairly notable is that online voter registration ends this Wednesday. So after that, registration would have to take place in our office or on election day.
Get out there and exercise your vote. Leaf collection started up this past, I'm sorry, starts today and continues through Thanksgiving and, yeah, I dare say longer, as long as there's a need and the weather hasn't shut us down. Usual rotation is shown on the map. Monday's on the east side, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, between the rivers. And on Fridays, the south side, which for us is west of the West Twin River. If you'd like to move your leaves just once and not worry about them blowing up and down the street like they sure as heck are tonight, they might even be blowing into another pickup zone, the compost site at Woodland Drive remains open and an option. Upcoming events, Central Park West fundraiser out at Port Sandy Bay, Wednesday of this week, four to eight P M. Fifteen percent of all sales benefit the Central Park West three sixty-five project. So we thank Travis and Port Sandy Bay for their support for this community project. We've got one, maybe two other restaurant promotions coming up similarly with opportunities to support the project. And we're, we're reminding people now also more of the opportunities to support the project and maybe, maybe share a memory or a tribute with pavers in front of the new bandstand. The family fundraising has now eclipsed their one hundred thousand dollar but they are looking to overshoot that by a decent amount in order to fund some of the things that are specific to the memorial and tribute to the family that are above and beyond what we'd expected as our cost of the stage. So they're coming along very well on that. Over at the senior center, the health, senior health and information fair is this week, Thursday, the twentieth, eight A M. to noon. Different vendor groups, you can get your blood pressure checked, get your flu shot, get whatever card you need laminated and there's continental breakfast and/or prizes. So encourage people to come out and see what the senior center has to offer and access some of those services. The, was mentioned earlier, the Two Rivers Main Street Fall Wine and Beer Walk, Friday, October twenty-eighth, five to eight P M. Tickets still available through Two Rivers Main Street and night off at the Main Street office.
Seeds and beans as well.
Seeds and beans.
Yeah, that's the other location.
So a popular event and an important part of Main Street's annual fundraising and, and promotion for people to come on downtown. This, this slide is a two for the price of one. First of all, on the far right, downtown trick-or-treating, always very popular. Saturday, October twenty-nine, eleven A M. to two P M. In downtown Two Rivers. Good weather days in the past, yeah, it's been upwards of eight or nine hundred youngsters and with their parents in tow up and down the main street. Very cool event and I believe, Jason, in the last meeting, thirty-five businesses?
Thirty-seven are most ever. So.
Okay, thirty-seven signed up for that. This isn't the wine and beer. This is candy. They're handing out candy. And then for community-wide trick-or-treat on the real Halloween, the traditional Halloween, because we for many years haven't gone to this Saturday, Sunday stuff. Monday, October thirty-one, city council doesn't meet that night, so they'll either be at your doorstep or handing out candy at their front doors. And that, we ask people in the community to, to please observe the hours of four thirty P M. to seven P M. And if you want the little tykes coming up to the room, maybe turn the porch light on. Central Park West donations and pledges, latest update, we're at just a little over seven hundred seven thousand dollars. Eighty-eight point three percent of the fundraising goal of eight hundred thousand dollars. This includes a recent grand award of This includes a recent grand award of five thousand dollars from the Aurora Healthcare Foundation. There are a couple other applications out and as we discussed at the last meeting, we're actively looking at the funding opportunity through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation's Vibrant Spaces Grant Program recently announced to possibly supplement our local funding on this. Project plans and specs have been advertised. They're out there and talked to our designer, Blake, from Architecture last Friday. I noted a couple of area general contractors that were not yet plan holders. He followed up with them and they've pulled plans as well. So we're all watching with interest to see how the bids come in, like every project lately, but on this project. Still, still welcome donations and we've got a, I, I hope by the time of the next meeting to have a couple more announcements on some nice donations. My account, Two Rivers Utilities launched my account on September twentieth, and this is an online management tool that allows you to view utility bills, pull up a lot more history and, and information than is, appears on your print bill. And you can also sign up for paperless or auto pay. Dave Bus, I didn't ask recently, but do you know what, what our count is or Brian on auto pay? A little over seven hundred now. And we, for the next regular meeting, we'll do a little bit of a demo of what, what you find out there, so.
Are we ever going to get back to the way we used to have it with the, what your dollar amount was last month, the month before?
We did, we did talk about taking that back to the utilities committee for review for the, for what actually does appear on your printed bill.
Right. Just rather than a bar graph where you're kind of guessing.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that was a, quite a while ago, at least two months ago that we talked about that.
Yeah, that hasn't gotten onto an agenda as yet.
Well, I was hoping that I invited, you know, the city council, if they had constituents who had questions, get the questions to us and then we can go ahead and address these and get a, get a suitable answer back. So if the people that you've talked to have particular questions, please forward them on to me and then I can get it to the rest of the crew and get an answer back to you.
I guess what I'm hearing from your comments previously, Jeff, is they, they liked the information formatted like, like it was. Literally.
With, with an exact dollar amount, what it was the previous month and per unit and?
Dollars versus units consumed.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but when they research it as new format, that's not on there any longer.
And the question, is it, is it dollars or is it units of energy or units of water consumed?
Well, I hate looking at it. I've been looking at it way too much.
And what I'm hearing is there's, we could put it on the next utilities agenda and there's an open invitation to any other interested council members or their constituents that may have concerns.
Okay, so that's going to jump on the next utilities meeting to, to at least get it to where it used to be, at least talk about the, the bills being printed the way they used to be.
Discuss it.
Right, right.
Yeah. And anything else that people are concerned about.
So if, if anybody out there has anything else that they'd like to see on their utility bill, we're not talking about utility costs, but anything else on utility bills, you can forward that to Darla Leclair, who chairs that, the utilities committee, and she can speak for you or feel free to come to the meeting. It is also open to the public.
And I'll get that, I'll get those questions over to, to Brian. And so I'm not going to blindside you with anything that night, but you know, at least you'd be able to get some answers for us.
Uh, still on that topic, I, this was a Facebook post last week and we did put it in the utility bill insert currently going out. We talked in August about, gee, why are our electric bills going up so much? And why do they appear to be in, in fact, we're going up? Of course, we, most people use more units of energy in July and August than they do other times of the year, if they have air conditioning going or other things. We pointed out at that time that we had an unusual set of circumstances in August that impacted the P C A C. Sorry, that graphic, the blue doesn't show real well, but the power cost adjustment clause, which municipal utilities use under, under the P S C regs to adjust bills monthly to reflect in near real time their power cost. Our power comes from a mix of sources contracted through W P P I Energy, our energy supplier, coal owned by the city and fifty other generally municipal utilities, mostly in Wisconsin, some in Iowa and the U P. It's a mix of nuclear from the Point Beach plant, solar from notably the Point Beach Solar Project, which was contracted by W P P I from Nextera. That's why Nextera built a hundred megawatts out there. It includes coal plants in Minnesota and, and Oak Creek. And it also includes some natural gas generation, some hydropower, some wind power. And that mix, the cost of that mix of energy changes each month. In July, as we shared at the time, there were two major coal plants that supply W P P I and in turn the city of Two Rivers that had unexpected mechanical outages and that required replacing that energy with other more expensive energy. On the overall grid, it was a, a peak time, so there were some additional transmission costs incurred. It also does relate to the peak usage in any given community because you pay more and we've talked about shape, doing everything we can with larger users to try to shave that peak. This doesn't answer all the questions and the arguments out there, but to folks that have said this was B S. or whatever, after posted on city social media or words to that effect, I would just point out it's our honest straightforward attempt, not to say why our rates are higher than Manitowoc's. They are, they are. Everybody, everybody's rates are higher than Manitowoc's in all honesty around Wisconsin. But if you want to know why, with a set rate of ten point three cents per kilowatt hour, ten point three one cents, as a base rate approved by the P S C., why does your bill fluctuate so much in terms of cost month to month per kilowatt hour? It's that P C A C. And it did peak out, we hope peaked for a while in August at an extra four point one three cents per unit of energy per kilowatt hour. That's a forty percent lift in the, in the, in the cost per unit consumed above our base rate. It was expected to settle down. It's not back at zero or below. Some months this year it has been a negative, but for the month, for bills going out in the month of October, it is down two point, my eyes aren't that good, it's right in front of me here, point zero one two eight. So one point two eight cents as an adder, down from four point one cents. And we'll continue to monitor it and continue to share that information. So at least in terms of a major factor in why there was an uptick in the cost per kilowatt hour in August that is, has backed off some, this does illustrate that.
Do we have that same information for twenty twenty-one?
We do. Be happy to share that.
I just, I'm just curious to see the same peak in August.
Yeah, and again, our, our average for the year was still a, still a plus number, but just a little under a penny. Yeah, we'd be happy to share that, Scott. In fact, you can, this is easily generated off the P S C W website, but we'll, we'll run it and distribute it. Absolutely. Uh, that's, that's my report. So we just, at the end, we throw in the championship towel. Congrats again to the Raiders. Thank you, Council.
All right, very nice. Did you have anything for legislative or intergovernmental update?
Yeah, just a kind of a summary report. I've got to say, not to sound ungrateful, but we, we're a little underwhelmed with the extent to which we've, we've seen success on any project award for the bipartisan infrastructure bill funding for streets. We've gotten confirmation from D O T. that the city's application for eighty percent funding for surface work on rebuilding Emmett Street on the east side from seventeenth to twenty-second Street has been approved. Emmett was one of six or seven streets that the city submitted. We, we were hopeful that we were seeing, we had a couple inquiries back from D O T. About Roosevelt. Emmett in total is, I'm putting Scott on the spot, maybe a one point two million dollar project. Surface is only two hundred thousand. Roosevelt's a five million dollar project and with a pretty hefty bill for the surface. It's, it's more than a little frustrating and looking at the list of awards on D O T.'s website, I don't see any other small cities that have exactly gotten a boatload of funding awards either. There's a fair amount going to counties, et cetera. So we'll share more information on that with the council. But I, I guess I'd have to again register some disappointment for all the money we're seeing supposedly flowing down from the federal level and might be paid for by our grand and great grandchildren. We're not seeing a whole lot of it coming home to roost in our community where we've been pretty diligent and can, I hope will continue to be diligent in reinvesting in our infrastructure.
And we've kind of gotten the short end of the stick on that and I know that our representatives don't really answer to the D O T., but they're the ones that, that sent us the mon, or that sent the money that are charging us in taxes and they should have did a better job of prorating that to make sure everybody got their fair share of that because we're all paying into it and it's, it's kind of frustrating, especially when we don't get Roosevelt done. That's, that's quite irritating.
Small, non-retro, small, non-metropolitan area cities kind of got the shaft on A R P A. funding. In no way is our level of funding proportionate to, and I'm not talking major urban centers that might have some real arguments about condition of their infrastructure like Milwaukee or Chicago. I'm talking the difference between Two Rivers and Sheboygan. Sheboygan's doing pretty, nope, no, no animus towards Sheboygan. They're doing pretty well last time I checked.
There was quite a few of that, that A R P A. That were, that were much higher than us.
So stay tuned on that. That's the, the only other thing I guess I would mention is we shared this at the budget committee the other night. One of the real challenges, I'm on my soapbox, but it's intergovernmental. One of the real challenges we have is Wisconsin built a system historically where state shared revenues around since we adopted a state income tax in nineteen fifteen, I think it was, were meant to help local, keep local property taxes out. That pot has not grown. In fact, it shrunk a little over the course of the last twenty years. And Dave Bus shared the other night, we are getting about two hundred thousand dollars less in shared revenues from the state than we did, I believe, fifteen years ago. So, and in the meantime, we have levy limits where the state has said, without a vote of the people, the tax rate in support of your operating budget can't go up any more than the percentage of net new construction. So that's increasingly putting cities in a bind and we've got a state sitting on a big surplus, most of which maybe should go back to the people, but the state has really diminished its role in funding local services. And we need to keep reminding our state electants of that, whatever party they're in, they need to be reminded of that.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. On to number ten, which is the consent agenda. Under A, we have a presentation of minutes. There are two. We have a city council work session for September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two and city council meeting of October third, twenty twenty-two. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, minutes of meetings, there are seven. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under C, department reports for September twenty twenty-two, we have eleven. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. Under D, applications and petitions, we have a application for an operator's license recommended for denial by the police chief, Raquel Anderson and Mary Lipk Dupkey? Something like that. Sorry if I'm butchering that. The recommended action there is a motion to deny the applications based on the recommendation of the police chief. Information is in your packet if you have questions on that or feel free to ask the police chief. Under E, it is a summary of verified bills for the month of September for twenty twenty-two in the amount of two million, four hundred fifty, one thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. The recommended action is a motion to receive and file. The recommended action for the consent agenda as a whole is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda. Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? Bonnie, thank you, sorry. I saw Bonnie. All right. Any council discussion on the consent agenda? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Just wanted to say that with respect to the operator's license applications, city does have to send notice to the applicants of the denials and the reasons for the not the denials, so that should be done.
Okay, and that'll get sent out, I'd imagine, by Jamie, our city clerk, who works with Chief Colmeyer on that and probably with our city attorney, Jack. Okay, on to eleven, city council formal items. We have several there. Under A, we have an ordinance amending section eight dash three dash ten of city ordinances to allow operations of bicycles on sidewalks by persons twelve years of age and younger. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Um, I will say I thought it was for under twelve, but maybe I'm mistaken. Go ahead. We'll let you lead into that. Did we change that at the work session?
I recall specifically there was some, I had suggested under twelve and this is twelve and under, so it's meant to be inclusive of twelve-year-olds.
Got it. Yeah, I think that was something we talked right at the end, I think we.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, yeah, at the, at the September work session, city council discussed at some length with the representatives of the police department, our current regulations on bicycles, bicycles, e-bikes, scooters, et cetera. I'm just going to say bikes for shorthand. That included both the, the subject of this ordinance amendment and also notably where there might be some increased signage, trying to educate and advise bicyclists and ultimately enforcement. And that's, that part isn't reflected in this ordinance, but specifically the concerns about bicyclists on sidewalks, notably in the downtown area where we've heard from residents in the audience, we've heard from business people downtown. It does constitute a hazard and I expect we're going to see some additional signage and enforcement activity in that, especially as we get pleased back into the warm weather months next year. But one of the things that also came up is that presently the city ordinance on operation on sidewalks prohibits operation as consistent with state statute unless you exempt certain bicycling activities on sidewalks are considered prohibited. For years, Two Rivers had, has allowed bicycles on sidewalks, on bridges and on other areas designated by resolution of the council. And the only other, the only non-bridge area that's ever been done is on Riverview Drive, where you've got a curbed street that's very narrow without a whole lot of room for bicyclists. So instead they can ride on the very narrow sidewalks on Riverview Drive, but that's, that's what's allowed. Other than that, the ordinance, I'm just going to read what we're getting rid of, said, yes, bicycles with wheels twenty inches in diameter or less operated by children for purposes of learning to ride. That was, that was the only general exception. Well, you know, what, what if the kid's got a, you know, a twenty-four inch bike but is still learning to ride? How do you determine the child's level of, from a police officer standpoint, their, their level of proficiency as far as riding their bike? So this ordinance amendment changes it to allow operation on sidewalks of bicycles by children twelve years or less or bicycles operated by a responsible person over the age of twelve accompanying a child of twelve years or less. I think at the work session, we talked about adults, but you know, what if little Johnny, who's seven years old, is accompanied by his sixteen-year-old sister? So we changed it to a responsible party who's over twelve and would otherwise be illegal. Every person, then, then the next red section there is right out of statute, but it's worth reminding folks of in the ordinance, every person operating a bicycle on a sidewalk shall yield the right of way to any pedestrian and shall exercise due care and give an audible signal when passing a bicycle, electric scooter, personal mobility device or a pedestrian, kind of like passing on your left or something like that, the protocol out on the trail. And similarly, that warning is added if they're on bridge sidewalks. So that is essentially at the council by previous action and specifically allowed for operation of class one or two e-bikes on city trails and on city streets. That's pretty consistent with what's happening all over the country and it seems half the world is riding e-bikes these days. But this is the one ordinance amendment that council directed out of that work session. And chief would be happy to much more clearly explain it if you have any questions.
Yes, at our, our work session, I know that we talked about the age limit and we heard from some citizens who had young children, possibly around the age of ten or eleven, that didn't want their kids riding in the street as they are still young, still learning to ride. And as a parent, and I think as parents and grandparents up here as well, clearly understand that, that, that we don't need them driving next to cars that are going at rates of thirty miles, sometimes plus, because some people speed, that, that, that you don't need.
That, that, that you don't need a ten year old kid riding on the street right next to that car. Getting clipped by somebody who may be texting and driving or, or God knows what else. And, and the other part of that was a real emphasis on getting signage downtown to, to make sure everyone understands you cannot ride your bikes on the sidewalk regardless of your age. You need to walk them. On Washington Street in the, in our downtown area. And we also talked to Assistant Chief Minert and we're gonna put, I think it's talked about now, but we're also gonna put an extra emphasis. In reminding kids and teaching them in their class. Uh, part of uh learning how to ride bikes and how to ride them on the streets and with traffic and. Um, street signs and, and learning how to yield to pedestrians that are walking on those streets. So that there's gonna be a good emphasis both. In the school system, obviously, on city website and signage that we are gonna be putting up, so. Um, we'll get a motion. Thank you, Jeff. So I got a motion by Jeff. I, I didn't know if you're asking a question or if you're looking to make a motion.
Well, I need to make a motion so I can answer the question.
Okay, that's perfect. So do I have a second? Thank you, Darla. Council discussion. Go ahead.
Is there any way to keep e-bikes off the sidewalks? I mean, it, no matter what the age, if you have an e-bike, it's off sidewalk. That's where a lot of problems are coming from.
Certainly, I don't know how many, maybe, maybe there's some twelve years old and under operating e-bikes. Cause that.
There would be.
Generally, they are. If, if you're, unless you're twelve years or less, you, you can't operate a bicycle or an e-bike on the sidewalk. Um. And actually accept bicycles operated by children twelve years or less. Or bicycles operated by a responsible person over twelve accompanying. So that, that allowance for. Children up to twelve years old is specific to bicycles. So I think Chief could address it, but he's indicating agreement on the face of it. Anyone of any age operating an e-bike on the sidewalk would be in violation.
Yes. Yep, he's not in his head, yes, correct to that. By definition of bicycle versus an e-bike, yes. Good question, though.
Chief came up to me while the council was talking and uh, you know, by this ordinance is still. You know, if you're concerned about Washington Street, well, if you're over twelve, you still don't have the right to be on the sidewalks on a bicycle, e-bike or. Or anything like that. However, it doesn't prohibit those kids twelve years or younger from. Riding on the Washington Street sidewalk, just like any other sidewalk, but I, I assume council's mindful of that.
Any other questions? Seeing none, uh we got a roll call vote. Jamie?
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shumelunas.
I'm just, I'm gonna vote no, but I'm, I should have explained myself before I did, but.
Go ahead. You can explain it if you'd like.
Well, I just don't like the adults on the street and I see kids going wild all the time. Crossing in the middle of the road. If, you know, I had one, he thinks that um, he doesn't, that he'd rather see. An adult get hit on the sidewalk than in the road. Than a kid in the road. But these kids are gonna get killed if they keep go- driving the way they are. And I, I guess I wish if the police department would. Once in a while, just go after those kids. I mean. I don't know. I, I see so many bicycles. And all this and yet you, well, you want e-bikes off the sidewalk. It, there's no. Rules or regulations, that's what's bothering me. And there's not, there's only this kind of thing, well, you know, if you're twelve, it's okay, you can be on here. But is it okay for that twelve year old to go wild and cross in the middle of the street and speed on the sidewalk? That's why I'm voting no, because there, it just wasn't. I guess I thought that discussion was gonna go differently on, on our work session.
I was just gonna point out, Bonnie, some of the things you say clearly are, are ordinance violations now. It also comes down to the enforcement resources that are available.
Yeah, I know. No, I understand that, but. Um. I'm just saying that you can say all these things, but this is for the safety of the kids and stop them from going. You know, just last week I turned on Adams Street over there and I thought I saw something moving. It was dark. It's four kids. On their bicycles and they didn't, they looked like they were about eleven or something. And they weren't high school age. Just riding across the street in the middle of the street, no lights. I, I had to actually, you know. Well, look really close before I realized what, what it was. And if I wouldn't have been turning a corner and gone the speed limit and, which is not thirty, by the way. What I mean is even at twenty, they could have been hurt if they had done this in front of me. And we've had people come who say that it's a problem with bicycles and adults. Adults are a big problem. I, I've seen them do stupid things too. And I just, um. What?
I'm sorry, who do you think our kids learn it from? I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I realize this is a difficult problem because people are just, um. You know, raising their middle finger to the law. And I, I, I don't, you can't legislate morality, but that's. More, more or less, I'm voting no, because what difference does it make? This is another law that no one's gonna keep. So that's my vote.
Thank you.
No from Jason, or a yes from Jason, a no from Bonnie.
Yes.
That's Tech Messer.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey.
Aye.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Also had a question. According to this, does this. Do like three, four year olds with the little electric cars fall into this? Cause it's electric. Motorized something or another?
I, I wouldn't think so, but we'll let Chief answer that.
Says the exception is bicycles and.
At the little, yeah, the little Barbie Hot Wheels.
Okay. And I.
All right, motion carries A to one.
All right, thank you very much. On to B, we have an ordinance amending section two dash five dash six of city ordinances to provide. For two, two city council representatives on the environmental advisory board. The recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. Looking for a motion on this. Oh, do you want to do background?
This, this had come at the request of council member Darla Leclair, who chairs the environmental advisory board presently and uh. Noting, we, we have a mix out there. Some of our uh citizen boards have one council representative, others uh. Like all the advisory rec board comes to mind, have two. So the request is to raise the number of council members to two. As presented, it's just that net addition of one council member. It does create an even number. On the board, but it is an advisory board, so I, I guess for my part, I don't see a big danger in split votes. That might potentially come out of the EAB. So it, it would leave six citizen members as, as is now the case. But with provision for council to elect two of its members to the board, and maybe Ms. Leclair would like to speak to that as well.
Yeah, we, um, we've had some really stellar people who've been on EAB and for one reason or another. Um, have had to drop off. Um, a lot of it has to do with their work schedules, unfortunately. Um. And we have somebody who, and we'll speak more on this in just a couple of minutes. Um, there is a council member who is already actively interested in EAB. And uh has a background in environmental. So I think it's a win-win for us right now. Um. Right now we have one, two, three, we have four citizen members. And, and myself. Um, and so at least that second city council member is gonna round us out a little bit more and have, and be able to give us some input. Um, and just to throw this out there too, we are still looking for young people to. Join up as like liaisons to the high school or, you know, and we always talk about the Two Rivers High School. Let's talk about Rowan Colley. Let's talk about. Um, getting out there and, and opening it up to other kids, but I, I think that would be important. Um, it's very difficult to find kids who have the time to do these types of things. But anyway, so I, I think this adding a second city council member would. Be very advantageous to us and I think it would be a, a very good thing to do.
Okay, looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Scott, thank you. Council discussion. Jason.
So I guess my question is, uh, another council member can't serve on the committee unless they're designated as a council member. Is that?
Correct.
Yeah, I believe, I'll, our city attorney has opined in the past if this, if the ordinance specifies. A council member or two council members and citizens, even though, yes, council members are indeed citizens. Um, that, that, that language would act to exclude any more council members than are called out in the ordinance.
I think that's how it would be, have to be interpreted, yeah.
But one thing I'd like to say, though, is that it's open to everybody. And this is a board that doesn't have a lot to vote on. So, and all ideas are welcome. So if you. Let's say we have two city council members who are formally on it, there's still room as long as we don't make a quorum. Um, there's, we would like to hear everyone's input. So don't let that stop you either.
We do post, I think now all of our board and committee meetings that there may be an incidental quorum of another body, just because. Like at, at Finance Committee, Personnel and Finance, if we happen to have five or six council members show up. A, that's kind of great, but B, we have that notation, so we're legal. You don't transact business if you're not on the committee. But it makes it legal if you're there.
I was on that committee last year as a council member and you were there. How old?
I was there because I chaired, that was a weird, a weird situation. I chaired. Public Works Committee. And because EAB it answers to Public Works. That's how I was able to go ahead and get this started back up. Um. So I wasn't really there as a city council representative for the EAB. I was there more as a. Representative of Public Works.
Hey, well, we have the exact same scenario now year on there, she doesn't work. I don't understand why we're going to hustle to something that we've been doing.
This is a little bit different. Um, I know what you're saying, but when we first started the EAB backup. It was a little crazy for that first, for that first year. Um. But I think now it's a matter of making sure that we have enough people. Who are on the board formally, um, so that we could get work accomplished. But I, I mean, right now, um, it's not gonna hurt anything to have two council members. I, I don't represent Public Works and I'm chairing EAB. So that's why I am a council member on EAB. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
What I'm saying, it, it is exactly like it was last year.
Yep. But I have utilities now, not Public Works, but, right.
Yep, but I'm chairing Public Works and, and this is.
I know, but you're not chairing, you're not chairing EAB.
No, I'm just gonna show up at the meetings. Just showing up at meetings. I, I'm, I'm the one with the environmental background.
Anything else? Anything else, Jeff? Over on you.
And Jeff's point is, is valid. There's, there could be a pair, a structure that parallels what happened all of last year. Uh, on the other hand, Darla.
It's gonna look like it, but it's, yeah, the situation's a little bit.
Darla kinda stepped up and jump-started EAB and uh, yeah.
Anyone else? Uh, I personally don't like it, to be honest with you. Uh, it is a citizen committee. And although on Advisory Rec, we do have two council members, it's also a ten person body. I, I, I just, I like citizen committees to be citizen committees. And, and I think we should get the community involved and. This one usually has, uh, we usually find people pretty regularly and pretty quick for this board. And, and I don't want to see it overcome with a lot of council members. Just as we do with the rest of our citizen advisory boards. We don't have a bunch of council members on them. Um, I think most of them do only have one, checking with Manitowoc. They don't have an EAB, but they have something that's kind of similar. And they also only had one council member. I just kind of looked through theirs just to see. Kind of what all their committees and commissions kind of did. And for the most part, all theirs run with one. Um, so to me, I, I would vote no for that reason. Just, uh, I, I think we should get some more opinions. Out there to advise council that come from the city versus just council advising council.
I would love to have more people, more residents be involved in this. It's hard.
And, and all council members can come. It, it all boils down to when you can talk and. I mean, you'd have to ask for permission from the chair in order to chime in, or you, you wouldn't get a voting right, obviously. Um, again, that, that voting right is, is just to advise city council. It has nothing that is uh. I don't know, how do you wanna say it? That, that, that's gonna affect anything permanently without coming before the body before us tonight. But my opinion. Jack, and then we'll go to Scott.
I was gonna say, would it make more sense then to increase the. Citizen among people that can go from. Seven to ten or something, increase that so you can get more citizens involved.
I can't even get seven.
Aren't, aren't we, aren't we complete now tonight? From what I saw, except, except for I, one short, I saw the vacancies were there from the students.
Yeah.
But I thought those were the only vacancies. I thought there's two students and then Brian stepped down.
Susan, uh, I'm forgetting her last name.
Kelly, she's gone. Uh, Larry Thomas is gone. Brian Hendrickson is gone.
Okay, then show that on the website.
Yeah, right now I've got four, four residents. And then myself.
Okay.
Um. So, yeah, I mean, I, it would be nice to have, well, it would be eight members. I would love that. We had that at one time. But um, right now it's, you know, and I, I mean, we've got a, a good group of people who are on it, but. It would be nice if we were more robust.
And Brian Hendrickson was a great member and who knows, even by getting this out on the air, we may reach out to another science teacher that's within. Our own school district or even abroad that maybe teaches at another school district but lives within the city.
I'm hoping to get him back too. His work is what's complicating it right now, but there's, there's a possibility he'll be able to come back. So I'm keeping him in the loop so he knows what we're doing.
Anybody else?
Jack.
Jack, I'm sorry. Yes, Jack, you did.
All I was gonna say strictly from the legal standpoint is that if the council wants. Uh, to require the two council members beyond the board. It's, it's better to change the ordinance to expressly say that. I'm not saying the law requires there be two council members on it. Uh, I, I don't know of any law. Requiring any council members to be on something of this nature. All I'm saying is that for clarity. If you guys decide you want to on there, the, the, my best advice is to change the ordinance to actually. Say that so questions legitimate issues like you brought up, Jeff, uh, wouldn't arise in the future.
Okay, anything else, Jeff?
Can we just sustain with five and just keep it as is?
But right now we have no choice, you know. Um. Like I said, it would just be more robust if we can, if we can get up to eight. I mean, the more, the more people, you know, the more eyes you have on these types of issues. The better, because you're getting to get more input. Um, I, I would love to have a second city council member on there. If, if that's not gonna be, it's not gonna be, so. It's up to you guys. But like I said, you, council members can still show up and.
For, for everything.
Right.
Any other council discussion? All right, see none. What do we got this as? Lost my position. Roll call vote, yes, run B.
Bonnie Shumelunas.
You make a good point, Adam, but I, I'm gonna vote aye.
That's Tech Messer.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
No.
Jeff Delkey.
No.
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Jason Ring.
No.
And carry six.
Okay, thank you very much. Brings us to C. Resolution proclaiming October ninth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty two as Fire Prevention Week. Motion to read and adopt the resolution. I would assume we're inviting uh Chief Densing. Up to the podium to read his proclamation. Or his resolution, my bad.
Didn't mean to throw you, chief. Thank you.
No worries. All right. Twenty-two, twenty-two Fire Prevention Week Resolution. Whereas the Two Rivers Fire Department is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city through fire prevention and public education and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk of fire resulting in more than three hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred fires and two thousand five hundred eighty fatalities in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both nationally and homes are, yeah, I just read that. Never mind, sorry. Whereas, smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas, residents of Two Rivers should be sure everyone in their home understands the sound of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas, Two Rivers residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to the designated meeting place. And whereas, the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to educate the public about the critical importance of smoke alarms, escape plans, and the need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. This week is observed nationally and is supported by the public safety efforts of the fire departments, schools, and safety advocates in conjunction with the National Fire Protection Association for over 100 years. Now, therefore, the Two Rivers Fire Department hereby proclaims October 9th through the 15th, 2022 as Fire Prevention Week throughout our community and urges all people of Two Rivers to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of fire and other emergencies, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Two Rivers Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2022. Okay. Thank you very much. We're looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Jeff. Second by Jason. That was quick. Any council discussion?
I, I have one really quick question. Back when I was a kid in elementary school, we used to have visits from the fire department and they would show us how to do like a, how to hold your own fire drill at home and how to make sure that it's safe. You were looking, I remember looking for the octopus. I think is all the tentacles, it was too many things that were plugged into one receptacle. How much interaction do you have with kids?
A bunch. We actually go out and visit all the schools. We visit a number of the grades. Usually each one of the shifts does at least two to three presentations during the course of that week. And it's not just simple showing them the fire truck. It's actually teaching them things like that, giving them take-home materials and instructing them on what to do in case they're, they catch on fire, their home catches on fire. You know, all the things of that mattered. So we want to educate them so it's not just, um, just a preliminary thing, but it's, it's gauged upon their age and their understanding. Good question. Thanks for the outreach. Bill?
Uh, train people on fire extinguishers?
We do not. Because the prop's $15,000 and I haven't had money to buy one yet. Jeff?
I, I just wanted to give a shout out to the fire department because I know they do the, the training with the kids. Because we had a bonfire one day and my granddaughter came up and said, don't get too close, grandpa. You're gonna have to drop, stop, drop and roll. So I know you guys are reaching out to the kids and they do, they do comprehend what you're saying, what you're saying. So job well done.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, roll call vote. Jamie?
That's Deckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke. Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darlo Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
All right, thank you, chief. Uh, on to D. City manager, city manager's appointment to the EAB, Environmental Advisory Board. The recommended action is a motion to approve the appointment of Kate Gad to the Environmental Advisory Board to a term expiry May 1st, 2024, filling the vacancy created by Brian Hendrickson. Greg?
Well, to, to that end, as far as trying to get the EAB back up to strength with citizen appointees, Ms. Gad actually had the interest to submit a volunteer application form for the position. She does, I believe, also serve on the library board presently, but to a limited extent, I think that overlap is good, especially when it comes to things like some of the public education workshops that Darla mentioned earlier. So very happy to recommend this motivated, interested citizen to fill one of the existing vacancies on the board.
All right, do I have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? Tracy, thank you very much. Any council discussion on this one? Seeing none, this is an all in favor. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Thank you very much. On to E. This is council member to Environmental Advisory Board. The recommended action, council discretion. Council member Tracy Coach expressed interest to join this board.
Given your action, just approving the amendment to the ordinance, this would take care of that second council seat. Council's discretion as to who you appoint to the board, but I do understand that Ms. Coach has expressed an interest.
Okay. So is anyone willing or wanting to serve on this board? Because we do have to open it up as we do at the beginning after our election there and at the end of April, we open this up to everyone for every single board. So we have to get anyone that has interest and then we'll take a vote on that. So does anyone have interest? Obviously, we see Tracy does have interest, given that's on our agenda. Uh, does anyone else have any interest in joining the board to fill that second seat?
I do, but I don't know if I can. It's, it's on there. I don't know if that matters.
That shouldn't matter.
I'm joined on.
She's a citizen and you're, she's the second council member.
I would defer that to, yeah, just to make sure, but I don't see how because it's an advisory board, not any.
We live in the same house, so.
She's your ex?
It doesn't matter.
I don't know.
Matters come before the Environmental Advisory Board that might be of benefit to, to either of you. In a pecuniary benefit, I mean, then you might have a conflict of interest as in any other public body. But no, I, I think just being there, being, the fact that you're both there doesn't disqualify you.
Okay, so we have Tracy and Jeff. Anybody else want to step up to the, yes, Tracy?
And to that, I've been showing up anyway and I will continue to show up for the meetings, just like I do for the planning commission.
And you're welcome to do that.
Whether or not I'm, I'm there as a, a council member, I'm going there, I read the agendas that come out every week and if there's a topic I am concerned about or have an interest in, I will attend that meeting as a citizen because I am both.
You can, you can go there as a council member as well.
You know, if he wants to be the, the council member, that's groovy. I will, uh, I'll, you know, right?
Anybody else expressing interest? No, so we have two. We have Tracy and we have Jeff. So we will do a vote. So if you, we'll do a, we'll raise our hands and then we'll prove it after with an all in favor. But we need to know who we're voting for first. So if you're looking to have Tracy on the board, indicate by raising your hand now.
What?
Probably should have a motion.
Well, we're, we're motioned, I think what we're doing here, though, is to advise one and we're picking.
It's nomination, so don't.
Yeah, it's a.
Robert's rules don't require a second for nominations.
That's true. You're right.
I, I guess I was assuming.
I think we need that to add, put them on there.
The two folks that's self-nominated, very much.
And you'd have the.
Yeah, and then we'll have the motion to approve that.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so if you are in favor of Tracy joining that board, please raise your hand. Okay, so then she will be on that ballot. We don't have to go any further than that. So we are looking for a motion to add Councilmember Tracy Coach to the Environmental Advisory Board. Do I have a motion for that?
No move.
Thank you, Darla. Second by Bill. Council discussion.
If the polls are wrong on this one, I'll scratch my head.
Jeff, I expect to see you at our meetings.
All right, this is a all in favor vote. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Very good. That brings us to F. Resolution authorizing execution of the, of the Department of Natural Resources Principal Forgiveness Financial Assistance Agreement for lead lateral replacement. Recommended action is a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution. And we'll kick her over to Greg.
Yes, this, this was in addition to your agenda over the weekend because we were contacted late last week by our DNR rep and the folks at Town and Country Engineering who have assisted us on our applications for safe drinking water funding, advising, and, and the DNR is kind of running behind on processing some of their loan and principal forgiveness documents that if we wanted to be able to close on the principal forgiveness agreement for lateral replacement, the, the, the private side lateral replacement where the city isn't doing any borrowing, but in fact is getting 100% funding passed through DNR. It's still called the Environmental Loan Program. It's still called Principal Forgiveness, but 100% of the principal is forgiven. That in order to be able to close on that this calendar year, which would be nice because we've expended the dollars, the city has advanced the dollars, there would need to be council authorization for the signing of the Financial Assistance Agreement tonight so we could get that off to DNR. That does mean they will, they, DNR will be supplying one of these financial assistance agreements. We would review it at, at staff, probably look very much like last year's agreement, and execute it. So please understand if you, if you approve the resolution tonight, it's solely to allow the city manager and clerk to sign an agreement that would be for 100% principal forgiveness to fund the private side led lateral replacement. I think the resolution says it's an amount up to $207,000 and change. We have not yet committed all of that. As we mentioned earlier, we've got about 20 or so scattered site laterals. We wouldn't mind picking up between now and next April. But with this authorization, we can at least sign the agreement timely when the DNR gets it to us and get any appropriate reimbursement for this year's spending yet this year.
That amount is $207,500. So.
Thank you.
Pretty much right on. Uh, we will, do you have a question for Greg?
Yeah, so if, if this passes and we are eligible for those, the 2,700.
2,700.
Right. What did I say?
You said 700.
I was wrong. $207,000.
Better yet, yes.
Would that money have to be spent in 2023 or, I mean, I'd like to be able.
It's, it's a little weird because this is this year's agreement. Normally we'd have signed this year's funding agreement before now. We were assured it was coming. Uh, no, we, it, the deadline helped me out, Scott. You know, is it the end of April? It is sometime in April next year. End of April. So we'll, we'll make best efforts. We don't want to be digging up too many private services in January and February in this part of the world. But if we have them lined up, we can certainly be doing them in March and April. And honestly, between now and then, if anybody has a, springs a leak in their water service lateral, whether it's on the public side or on the private side, we're obligated by state law to replace, if it's, if any part of it's a lead service, we have to replace the, the entirety. All, all of the lead, yeah. So we may pick up a few that way just because in the, in the course of a typical year, we have 10 plus service breaks and often they're on older services. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just kind of concerned about that because I mean, this type of a, um, a situation doesn't come around very often. I'd like to be able to squeeze every single penny out of what they're, what we could possibly get.
Yeah, and I'll admit it, it's, not too long ago at a meeting, I said, well, I understand all 50 scattered site replacements are accounted for, actually all 51. They have been in terms of our contract with essential water, thank you, essential sewer and water services. However, 20 of those were public side only. The private side already was non-led. Somebody probably replaced with copper a while back. So while we've met our requirement relative to that contract, we still have funding availability for private site in the, in the tank, if you will, for 20 more. But it, yeah, it takes a little persuading and we need to do a little more persuading. I saw Manitowoc is saying the same thing was in the paper this past weekend, that they still have funding availability and they're urging people to come out.
Okay, looking for a motion on this. Thank you, Jeff. Second by Jason. Any council discussion? Sounds like a real good deal to me. And it also sounds like a roll call. Jamie?
Tracy Coach.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Darlo Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stackmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Dahlke.
Aye.
Motion carries.
By the way, I expect at one of the November meetings, we'll have a financial assistance agreement and borrowing documents to bring back to council on this year's sewer projects. Notably, the lateral replacement, no, excuse me. Seventeenth Street. Yes, and work at the plant where we haven't expended the funds for the most part yet on the, the screw press. I fully expected to have those documents in September when we brought you the other clean water, excuse me, the other safe drinking water closing, but there's been some delay at DNR. But we won't as staff be committing on any borrowing. We couldn't if we wanted to without council approval. So we're hoping to get that done in November.
All right, for information only.
Yes, uh, as noted on the agenda, the Personnel and Finance Committee and the chairman, Councilmember Dahlke mentioned, as did I. This Thursday, budget review, 7 o'clock, continuing through general fund. Council workshop session next Monday, the 24th. Among other things, that will include some brief discussion anyway of regulations related to golf carts on city streets. Uh, I thought it might be a good time to, at least in summary form, take a look at the city's goals for the current year as adopted by this council. And October, October's a five Monday month. There will not be a council meeting on Halloween, October 31. Our next regular council meeting, three weeks from tonight, Monday, November 7. One other informational item that I wanted to, to mention tonight, so you heard it here first. And that is, uh, late last week, both City Manager's Office and the Police and Fire Commission did get a letter from Police Chief Brian Kolmeyer indicating his intent to retire effective December 31 at the end of this year. So I wanted to share that with council and we'll, we'll speak at, at more than one future meeting to all the contributions Brian has made throughout his career, not just to the department, but to this community. Um, and also the Police and Fire Commission has been meeting to discuss succession and selection of a new chief. They will be meeting for further consideration and possible action tomorrow night. You probably noted there's an agenda out there for Police and Fire Commission. So more, more thanks and many accolades to come, but Chief Kolmeyer has made official his intent to retire at year end.
Sad day for Two Rivers. Chief Kolmeyer's done a great job here. He's been here forever. He's almost like a statue. Hopefully he'll remain here forever as well.
High degree of professionalism and a high degree of commitment to his hometown. And we've all, we've all seen that.
Yep. So we will vote to go into closed session, but be, once we do vote on that, we will take a health break. Diane and school board members have waited here patiently for any questions that may arise from anyone here at council. So before we officially go into closed session and close the doors, we'll give them an opportunity to speak and anyone up here to use the restroom or anything else they may need.
And I would mention, I, I did in an email to council over the weekend, while the agenda anticipates council possibly acting on of the final version of a development agreement relative to redevelopment on the downtown Eggers property, former Eggers plant property. We will be reviewing an outline of key points tonight for a development agreement. And I think as far as we might take it is to seek the council's concurrence on those key features of that development agreement, uh, which will be brought back for action at a future meeting date, hopefully as soon as next Monday. So just to clarify that a bit.
Okay. On to 13, closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed session per Wisconsin statutes 19.851E. When deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Tonight, we have the review proposed development agreement with YBR Properties LLC regarding city TIF assistance for redevelopment project on the former. regarding city TIF assistance for redevelopment project on the former Eggers industrial downtown site. Looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second? Thank you, Scott. I saw Scott's hand. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, Jamie.
Bill Leclerc. Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Jason Ring.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimilunas.
Aye.
Scott Stuckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Husky.
Aye.
Jeff Delkey. Tracy Coach. Motion carries.
All right, we'll take the five to 10 minute health break. Thank you.